Yeah, it happens. I haven't felt this in a long while, but today's one of those days. Ms. Willis, how are you doing, ma'am? How you doing Denise?
Hey, everybody, I'm doing.
Hello.
We're doing good, man. We're doing good.
Hello, everyone.
This mute button and I are kind of having a fight right now.
Understandable.
It's a very nice day out, I tell you.
Yeah, yeah. Ms. Norma.
Good afternoon.
Ms. Norma, can you help me again with that name on item number two?
Item two.
Yeah, what's the name of the gentleman?
We go Yervon.
We just say Yervon.
I knew it was something, I just couldn't remember. There are just too many consonants in that, in that, in that name.
I like to pronounce that last name, but I don't dare try it.
If I pick my laptop up and go out and sit on the swing, you'll understand, won't you?
Oh, yeah.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon. Now, understand that Etra's not going to be on for this today?
Correct.
Mr. Motta.
Yes, sir.
How are you doing, sir?
I'm all right. How are you?
I'm good. I will be good here in a little bit. I was just telling everybody, don't be surprised if I not off.
Hey, that's the weather.
Well, I kind of exerted myself today. I'm having a good day. And in my little radio treatment got kind of kicking in today. It's just one of those days.
We all have them, so we got you.
Yeah, it's just, I had a radiate, low dosage radiation treatment answer, and then I kind of exerted myself this morning, so.
Yeah.
It's catching up to me. I got little shakes. I have, I have my little jar of candy right here that I'm trying to keep my, my energy up.
Well, just hold your hand up or something and we'll keep, keep you, we got you.
Just poke me.
I know the feeling. I actually brought in cookier, cookier to the meeting. You can have me a snack.
Well, I was, I'm talking to, I'm talking to one of my, my investments, and I'm about four and a half years from, from cashing in some of my investments, and so, tax-free.
Good deal.
Yeah, yeah. You spend a lot of time trying to, trying to build that up.
Oh, I know the feeling.
I'm close. I'm close.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hi Natasha.
How are you doing today?
I'm doing well.
Enjoying any sunshine? Are you able to get any sunshine?
I, I can see a little slither out of the little.
Oh.
It's a nice day.
It's a beautiful day. I've been out in my, just sitting out in my yard most of the day. Reading and cleaning out my car and. Denise, how was your spring break?
It was good to drive back here to all the dirt. No, it was nice to get away. My, my grandson had a good time. It's one of those that you need a vacation, though, after a vacation.
Of course.
Yeah. That is true. And sometimes a small loan. So, everybody's in already. It's three o'clock. I'm going to call the Odessa City Council Work Session Tuesday, March sixteenth, the year 2021. It is 3:00 P.M. We are in session. We are going to start off with our invocation, and I'm going to go upon Councilman Mark Mottack and lead us in prayer. Mr. Mottack, would you go ahead and do, give us the privilege of prayer today?
Sure, Will. Thank you. Father God, we thank you for this beautiful day that you came to this, Lord Jesus, and these kind of days remind us, Lord, that you are the God that brings us life, Lord, and new beginnings. Lord, we just thank you for that, and Lord, we just come before you today, Lord, we just ask, Lord, to give us the wisdom that we need and all that we need, Lord, Father God, to be able to, just take. To us today, Lord, Father, so we, we just be a good steward for the citizens of Odessa, Lord Jesus, and that we would just make wise decisions, Lord. I just pray for blessings upon each and everyone here that's present. Now, you would just keep them praying, Father God, and we just thank you, Lord, for the wonderful, the wonderful Savior that you are, Lord Jesus, and we just pray for blessings upon this meeting. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
Counsel, for the record, do we have Councilmember Thompson?
I do not see him.
He is, he's, he's not on.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have we heard from him?
Mayor, I sent him, I sent him a text. I have not heard back from him.
I did. We did speak to him this earlier today, and we reminded him up to three o'clock.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I spoke to him about seven thirty this morning, and so I thought he was aware of it. He may be having some technical difficulties. I knew he was doing his therapy. Okay, we'll just go, so, Ms. Grimaldi, you've, you've noted that, that he is not in, he's not in attendance?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're going to go ahead and move on. Item one, presentation, discussion of the water treatment plant rehab. Mr. Kerr?
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'm going to open it up and then hand it over to Tom, but I, this is an item that I know many of the council have had questions about, and I want to begin by thanking all the council members who have, who have gone to the facility to see firsthand its current condition, so thank you for your time for that. And the other mayor is that I want to let the council know that the presentation regarding the water treatment plant this afternoon will be in two parts, if you will. One will be a technical part as it relates to the condition of the plant and its rehab, and then the other is, the second part of this will be one to really provide the council information on methods or ways that the council may consider if it chooses to move forward and how to fund the project. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Tom.
Good, sir. Is Tom on? Here we go.
I'm sorry, I was muted. Thank you, Michael, Mayor and Council. We appreciate your time today to, to discuss the water treatment plant project that we have, and as Michael indicated, this first portion will be about the project itself, and so we have a presentation for you on that, and also we'll have a part of that presentation to discuss one of the questions that came up in a previous meeting, which was the, the topic of a completely new plant versus rehabbing or refurbishing the existing plant. So I want to introduce to you Hutch Masalem. He is the Vice President and Senior Project Manager with Corolla Engineers Incorporated, and he's been working with us since the beginning of this project back in 2016. He is the very knowledgeable. He brought together a very, very talented team to work with us on this project, and we appreciate all of that effort, and so I'll, I think I'll turn that on over to Mr. Masalem.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, dear members, for inviting us, inviting me to talk about this presentation. Can you all see this, the slideshow and the presenter, and can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, good afternoon, and we're going to be talking today about the water treatment plant rehabilitation and miscellaneous upgrades project that Mr. Marrero alluded to and Mr. Kerr presented. And today's agenda, we're going to, you know, discuss the project background. I know several of you are new at the council, at the city council. We're going to talk a little bit about the major scope elements that are included in this project, talk about some of the conclusions, project schedules, our current cost estimates. And I know there has been a lot of questions about, you know, a new plant, of, you know, what would this have been a better deal if we went to a new plant altogether? And we're going to talk a little bit about that, and then we'll open it to questions, but as I'm, you know, even though I put the questions at the end, feel free to stop me while I'm presenting if you have any, any questions, and if I can't see you because of this virtual type of meeting, you know, interject or try to, try to ask a question, I'll, I'll try to accommodate you as much as possible, and I appreciate, appreciate the time. So, let's talk about the project background. We started working on, with the city of Odessa on this project back in the 2016, 2017 timeframe, and we started with a condition assessment of the water treatment plant. And so the intent of that condition assessment was to recommend ways to optimize the plant operations, assess existing conditions and limitations. You know, we looked at anticipated life expectancy of major equipment and structure. We also evaluated the plant capacity. We wanted to see, okay, what is the ultimate capacity that this plant can safely treat, or what the, you know, what's the, what's the flow rate that this plant can, can, can safely treat? And then we identified and prioritized recommended improvements. And as you see, and this is really not a, not a, not a picture to scare anyone, but due to the age of the, of some of the facilities, we identified areas that would require improvements, and, and this is, this is true in Odessa. This is also true in any of the water treatment plants in the, in the nation that have been, you know, operating for many years. So there was some concrete corrosion, maybe questionable construction practices, you know, things that were done many, many years ago that we wouldn't do again. There was some structural concerns. Some of the equipment, if you see in the center page, and you see a lot of corrosion, has exceeded its useful lifespan. The, the raw water that y'all receive from CRMWD has high chlorides, and that's really very corrosive. This is common in pretty much everywhere in West Texas, and so you, you would expect to see these corrosions, corrosive attacks on equipment, and what that does is that it shortens some of the lifespan of these equipment. So we saw some of that. You know, we had, we identified improvements, but we had specific goals in mind. So our goals would be either to replace or betterment of the existing processes and structures. We want to make sure that we had, you know, structural and really safety improvements for the personnel and for the staff and folks that are working at the plant and for the citizens. And we wanted to meet current Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, and I'm going to call them TCEQ regulations, and we wanted to increase water production reliability, and so this is kind of like the umbrella of what we were operating on in this condition assessment. And so if you look at that, you know, picture or area of that water treatment plant, we identified needed improvements in virtually all these areas and many areas of that plant. And so a lot of, you know, a lot of you are, are, know about water treatment and, you know, conventional processes, but just in the event that some of you may need a, may need some refresher, a refresher there. This is a conventional water treatment plant, and really, raw water comes in, and if you can look at the top part or the lower part of this slide, raw water comes in, you know, chemicals are added to condition the water, and then the solids, you know, the, the settleable solids and, and dissolved solids start to flock by virtue of a chemical reaction. And once they start flocking, they, they become like a, a little bit of small cotton part, cotton-like particles, and then there's a process called sedimentation, and it's nothing but a way, sedimentation, settling basin to allow these particles to settle. And so this is your first part of the treatment, when you get raw water, and then after you pass it through the flocculation sedimentation basins, you're getting, after that becomes settled water, and the water quality is a little bit better. And then after that, you pass it through a more rigorous filtration system, and those are, you know, your existing filters that, that are at the plant, and so you filter that water some more, and then you just, you add chlorine for disinfection. Sometimes you have to add caustic to make sure that the pH is, is in the appropriate range for your distribution system, and then it goes and sits in your clear well. And then from the clear well, which is basically the chlorine store, you know, the, the water, the surf, you know, surface water, a cleared water, treated water storage tanks, it's pumped to your distribution system, your elevated tanks, your distribution system prior to getting to, you know, the customers. So this is in a nutshell, the conventional process that the city has right now. So let's talk about the major scope elements. If you remember, we talked about the flocculation sedimentation being that first line of defense, if you might, if you may. So the 2017 condition assessment proposed replacement of train one and/or plant one, and so the, the convention at the plant is they call the trains plants. It's really one water treatment plant, but it's into, built into two different trains because it's done in two different times. So the word train and plant are going to be interchangeable, but they mean the same thing for this, for this, for the city. So the condition assessment proposed replacement for plant one flocculation and sedimentation equipment because of age, and it also started looking at miscellaneous structural rehabilitation. And in closer look at the train one flocset basin, it, it was noted from a structural perspective that it was of inadequate design and construction. Really, there was no expansion joints, shallow rebar embedment, and it was really significant leakage. So when we looked at it in further, you know, how do, do we retrofit? Do we rehab plant one, or do we, do we replace this plant one, which is just a portion, the flocculation sedimentation basin? We felt like if you repair it, we're really throwing good money after bad money, and we had, our recommendation was to replace the train one flocculation sedimentation basin, and really, the leakage will not be completely resolved by rehabilitating the existing structure. Space is needed for expanding the chlorine building, so by replacing it, we're allowing additional improvements at the nearby chlorine building. When you have a new technology, new process, you know, they were adding flexibility when switching between train one and train two. This is something that is important for the staff as they run this plant, and then the new high-rate plate settlers will provide a smaller footprint and longer lifespan. So we also propose a newer technology, not a technology that has not been there for quite some time, but newer than what the city already had, and that's the high-rate plate settlers. So technological advances improve plant performance and revitalize an aging structure. The high-rate plate settlers can increase the surface area for particle settling, make it a little bit more efficient. It's really, because of the plate settlers, you can, the, the, the equipment per se, the, the space would be less, so you'll, when you have a smaller sedimentations basins means less concrete, which saves on capital costs and labor. And you've got a lot of stainless steel components in these plate settlers, and stainless steel, especially what we're going to use, the 316 stainless steel, is going to be less susceptible to corrosion, and that's an important factor because of the high chlorides and, and the raw water from, that you get in West Texas. You know, as a side benefit, replacing the train one flocculation basins with high-rate settlers also facilitates adjacent construction. So there were some added benefits to the project in, in this replacement, and those benefits were associated with the improvements that were needed for the chlorine building, and I'll, I'll, I'll mention that. I'll talk about the chlorine building some more later on this presentation. So a phased approach, so in the future, you know, many years down the road, if the city decides to upgrade plant two, we can demolish the existing plates, the existing floc sedimentation basins, and add forty MGD in the future for basically two twenty MGD trains. And this will also free up a good, you know, an important real estate at the plant that can be used for other processes in the future. So it's, so we can master plan these improvements for now and, you know, for the future to allow, to allow the city to react to, you know, should there be any, any upcoming needs or, or requirements for that water, for the treatment of that water. Are there any questions at this time? The other major scope component is the filters, and that's really the, one of the more important processes. Also, the condition assessment identified needed improvements to the existing filters, concrete repair, repair guardrails, stairs, grading, grading members, repair record pipes, replace filtered differential pressure instruments, underdrain, yet media, we need to improve the backwash, so we recommended installing a fixed grid surface, grid surface wash, and, and or media returning troughs with combined air scour surface wash, should be, elidiate mudballs. We needed to have hydraulic improvements because even though those filter, the filters are rated at a certain cap, capacity, they were hydraulic, they were hydraulic bottlenecks that prevented that, all that water to go through. So we wanted to make sure that we meet the TCEQ criteria. One of the criteria that is very important, and it's a measurement of the filtrability of the filter capability, filtration capability, is the length over, the L over D, which is a dimension ratio. It measures the filter media depth to the effective size D, and the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality recommends that, you know, filters should have an L over D ratio of at least a thousand. In Texas, you know, the L over D ratio is, is almost six, seven hundred, maybe six sixty-eight, which is a lot less than what the TCEQ requires. That said, I mean, that's the water that is currently being treated in Odessa meets or makes the standards as being, is safe, so that's not really the point. The point here is we needed to upgrade it to get it to the new regulations to even be better. And so with that, you know, how do we get the L over D? How do we, we improve that? We needed to look at a different design for the underdrain, and so we are going to replace the filter underdrain with a low-profile underdrain to gain media depth. And so that's something that, that's a significant change that is going to be part of this project. You know, with the existing depth right now, before the improvements, the media is twenty-seven inches. When we're able to reduce the, the underdrain, and if you look at the picture on the right, that's really the underdrain. There's that black plate on top. That's where the media sits, and then the water filters through the underdrain, goes to the gullets, and then goes to, to the outside channel, and then goes to, goes to the clear well. So we're going, we're going to increase the media depth from twenty-seven to thirty-eight means there's eleven inches of additional filtration capacity.
Hutch, if I could, I'm sorry, Hutch, if I could interject real quick. Part of, part of the significance here, too, is that y'all may recollect that about a year ago, we had a, a notice that we weren't, we did not meet the state's TC in net turbidity units or filtered performance levels for a month, about a year ago, or a little over a year ago, and that had, had, had something to do with some of our raw water quality changed, but a thicker media like this, a more robust filter will help us to prevent having those issues in, in the future. You'll, you'll see one from our winter storm. We had to push more water through than we normally would in the wintertime, and so you'll, we'll see, we potentially will see another one of those notices from the TCEQ. It's not a health, it's not a direct health consideration, but it's a performance standard for the plant, but by enhancing the, the filters, it will give us a better ability to make sure that doesn't happen as much in the future.
Tom, real quick question. How many times have we gotten those notices? Is it the lifespan of the plant, or have you been there?
That's the, and I'll go by Rip Halbedear's time. He, he indicated that's the first one we've had in twenty-five years.
May I, may I ask a question? This is Denise today.
Yes.
So, one of my questions was going to be, since we're talking about TCEQ, do we actually have a, a letter drafted from them that we don't meet the standards, or do we have any guidelines from them, bullet pointing what we need to do and what we're supposed to be doing?
Well, the, I'm sorry.
Do you want me to answer this, Tom, or do you want to?
I'll touch on it. You can straighten it up if, if otherwise. So the, the, the condition that's there is grandfathered over time. The standards that the TCEQ has, has adopted for the one thousand number occurred well after the plant was constructed and in, in business. So they, they have not sent us a letter that we are in violation. However, when you start to rehab your plant, when you're doing major reconstruction or work on a, on a portion of the plant, they will require us to submit our plans to them for review, and as such, they will review to make sure that we're upgrading to the current standards. So it's kind of similar to if you do a major permit adjustment to a, a commercial building or something like that, and you're revising your electrical system or anything like that, you'll need to bring it back to newer codes, and so that's, that's kind of where we are on that, I think. Hutch, I would need it with you.
That's perfect. I mean, you, you know, you were grandfathered in, but the minute you touch, you're going to improve a process, they're going to try for you to get back to the standards with as much as possible, and so.
Let, let me ask a quick question there, Hutch. When you, you have another government entity that introduces that, and so they're going to have to, are they, are they going to have to approve all these plans, and are they going to come back with addendums that could increase costs? I mean, is that a possibility? It's always a possibility, I would think.
So there's always a, I'm not going to say no, but, you know, we don't operate or we don't design in vacuum, right? And so when we review, when we did the condition assessment, and as part of our design, we are wanting, we want to make sure that we are meeting the TCEQ regulations. In fact, on this particular filter issue, we had at least two meetings with TCEQ. In fact, on this particular filter issue, we had at least two uh, meetings with T C Q. They were virtual because of COVID. But then we had two virtual meetings with the reviewers at T C Q to talk about the filters. And they needed improvements and we, we have already started engaging them on that. So we do not anticipate major changes um, when they look at these plans. Because this is not the, we've done several of these improvements in plants in Texas.
Okay.
And they have already been engaged in this project.
Okay. Uh, let me ask, let me ask this final question. How much of the percentage of the plant are they going to be engaged in, in reviews? And then possibly to make uh, addendums if, if it comes to that?
So, so the way this, the way this works is, you know, we are, this is a very huge, I mean, there's a, if you look at the sheets, there's probably a thousand sheets. I, I can't remember. Um, and that you, when we sign and seal these sheets, we send this with the letter, with the report to T C Q to look at and give us their blessings. And um, you know, occasionally they may have a question or two, or occasionally they may, they may instruct us to make some slide modifications. I see that rarely, especially the, especially when, you know, because we can understand what they're doing. Does, it's the question, does us bringing this up to T C Q add cost to the city? Yes, it does. And that's all figured in, in the estimated cost of the plant.
What, what percentage?
I can't tell you what percentage because the way we do it is we get these plans, we look at these improvements altogether, combined, and then we started, we started costing it out. We don't have, you know, um, you know, I mean, we could, we can, I can do some research and figure it out. Okay, well, how much, how much this, this bringing this L over D to a thousand uh, add a cost? But we were going to have to make some recommend, some improvements to the filters anyway. So um, we're just making, we're making sure that whatever improvements we make uh, actually hit two bricks in the one stone, meeting the T C Q requirements and meeting, submitting Odessa's needs to uh, to get even better water.
Okay. I'm just looking at the, if, if, if T C Q doesn't uh, make any addendum to changes, is a possibility to re, recapture that percentage that's been already worked into the bid and back to the, you know, back to us. So we know.
Well, I mean, once we seal, as, as professional engineers, we have to, you know, based on, I'm not going to say that anything is perfect, but based on our professional opinion, we're not going to tell the city, hey, I mean, I'm sealing these documents and you're not going to meet regulations or the compliance. So once we seal, we are designing in accordance with the T C Q uh, requirements.
Okay.
This Councilman Thompson, I think the question, do you have, do you have a overrun budget built into that? Do you have some type of a change order uh, uh, budget factor, if you will, for missing the quote? I guess is the, is the point.
Yeah.
Ten percent error factor, five percent, two percent, twenty percent. No, nobody would come in and say this is what it's going to cost without some type of a contingency plan. I wouldn't think.
So in, in when we develop our cost estimates, and frankly, we are going to update the cost estimates, um, start updating the third, the fourth time sometime in the next two or three weeks. The more, you know, the bigger the definition of the project, the more rigorous our cost estimates. And, and we are, we, we do estimates, we're not contractors, but we do have an estimating group. And that the more you get closer to the hundred percent, the uh, um, less that, you know, what we call it, an identified project elements, some people call it contingency.
Okay. So the project's going to take how long altogether?
Yeah, the project that we, the numbers that we have right now includes some, some type of un, unidentified project element.
I'm, I'm sorry, counsel, I've, I've kind of interrupted Hutch here, but he's got more of that information as we, as we follow through. If uh, he's got a few more slides to finish.
I'm talking about it, Tom. This is a good time to talk. Because this project's going to take, what, eighteen, what have we talked about? Two years? Four year? What's, how long is it going to take?
Yeah, um, that, that too, I'm going to, I have a slide about schedule. Um, it's, it's probably going to take a three years for, for construction and startup, but I'll, I'll mention it all together in the next slides if you don't mind.
Here's the question we're talking about. We're talking about a two or three year period here. We all know, we all know the government's just spent four, four trillion dollars. We've got inflation coming and there needs to be, there's got to be some type of contingency in there for inflation, for parts, equipment, labor and everything else. And that's scaring me a little bit personally.
Yes, sir. He has, he has contingency in there and his uh, I don't know that he's got it on the slides here, but in his opinion of probable construction cost, I have seen his contingencies there. We have about, uh, I'm going to say it was about.
I understand you see them, Tom, but we need to see them. I need to know.
Absolutely, absolutely. Let's.
I want to know what they are.
Yeah, so let me um, yes, there, there are, and, and you know, that this is assuming, I mean, all these numbers are going to assume that this project is going to be bid this year, right? So if it, if the, if things get delayed and they don't get bid this year, then things might change and we'll make another, another assessment based on the current conditions.
Okay.
So um.
I understand that.
Pardon?
I understand that.
Yeah. So I guess what I'm saying is, you know, this is the other thing that T C Q is requiring other uh, other, other things like the air gap needed between filters and unfilled walls. So we're doing some structural modifications to the gullet. Um, and that, that came up when we met with them in, uh, over online a few months ago. And they said, you know what, we, you shall do this. And we tried to fight them and said, you know, we really don't want, the city does not want to um, pay extra money for that. But they said, no, this is, this is needed and it's, it's important. So we're including it in the, in the design. Um, so summary, um, polymanifications are included in the filter projects, miscellaneous structural rehab, new under drain system at each filter and new media twelve inch of point five millimeter sand and twenty inch, twenty-six inches of one millimeter anthracite. Uh, you know, we're going to install media retaining troughs at each filter and increase combined air scour water duration. That will help in your backwash. We're also getting this, you know, added new discharge parallel pipeline, kellenate hydraulic restrictions and allow for the fifty-five M G D filtration capacity. And maybe, you know, just number fifty-five, when we did the condition assessment and did the uh, evaluation of the plant, we determined that this plant uh, ultimate capacity is around fifty-five M G D. And so we're going to make sure we bring it back to fifty-five M G D, you know, with respect to chemical feed and, and, and all this, all the other processes. So the other thing that we're improving is the chemical feed buildings. You know, when we start looking at the old chemical buildings, et cetera, and the needs for the, the, the needed improvements, you know, we recommended that a new south chemical building, we call it south chemical building, be added to this project to provide chemical feed and storage capacity in accordance with T C Q requirements. We also looked at the existing chlorine and liquid ammonium sulfate building, which is basically the disinfection facility. And uh, we noted the need to add its system capacity and chemical delivery um, routes there. So looking at the picture here, that's really an isometric or a three D of the south chemical building and tank farm. Um, this, the, the chemical building to the left, you see, and will have uh, capabilities for caustic feed, alum feed, polymer, algicide, chlorine inhibitors. You know, they'll have, they'll provide the metering pump room. Um, and that's all this facility here is what we call the south chemical building. And really, you will have at least fifteen days of chemical storage onsite at the maximum flow of fifty-five M G D. So the fifteen day storage is a requirement by T C Q. And, and uh, at this time, you know, the plant did, did not have um, anywhere near this. Um, we also looked at the disinfection, the chlorine building. And so the analyst indicated that available bulk storage is less than T C Q requirements of the fifty-five M G D plant capacity. So we really had, we have about seven days versus the required fifteen days. And uh, we needed to add additional chlorinators uh, for added reliability and redundancy. And so there's also a requirement to separate the chlorination room um, from the chlorine storage room to, for safety and to comply with T C Q requirements. So we're going to make these modifications as part of this project. Um, and this is just the layout. If you look at this, at the left, where the, the red, these are um, you know, one ton chlorine cylinders. And we're going to be able to store about thirty-six of them onsite in the building. It's covered. And those who should be able to uh, feed this, the system for at least fifteen days. We're also going to add a nice feature where, when the loading and unloading of the chlorine trucks so that, you know, the, you know, to prevent uh, leakage.
Can I ask a question right quick?
Sure.
I hate to interrupt, but you're saying fifteen days, is that based on the current population, some kind of growth?
Those are based, so it's actually based on the plant capacity. So when we came up, when we said, you know, this is a fifty-five M G D plant, um, and we look at the historical um, and, you know, and testing requirements for what chlorine doses needed, it's based on the dosage requirement at the fifty-five M G D. And then once that, when you know how much is per day, you, you figure it out what, you know, you say, okay, I want to, I want a fifteen day storage.
I know.
Capacity, not the, not the population.
Fifteen day storage for a hundred thousand people is different from fifteen day storage for a hundred thousand people. So I'm trying to understand, we, we got significant growth going on. So I need to know what fifteen day storage for, how many possible residents?
Well, I mean.
Number.
Yes. So um, I mean, there is, based on the numbers that I've been seeing, and Tom and Rip can talk a little bit more, there is room to grow with the fifty-five M G D capacity. Cause I'm not, I don't think that, I think the maximum we've seen, Tom, is what, thirty-five to forty M G D?
Uh, the, the peak demand that we've experienced in the last several years is thirty-two M G D. That's a peak demand on a day in the summertime. So our average usage of, is about twenty and a half M G D across the year from beginning to end. Uh, I mean, the whole, the whole year. Um, and so our winter peak, our winter demand average is probably about uh, fifteen, sixteen M G D. But um.
Are you telling us that we could basically double the size of the city and still be okay?
I don't know that we can double it, but we certainly should be able to go at least another, let's see, we're talking thirty-two on fifty-five. You've got another eighteen, yeah. I'm sorry.
I mean, I would think that's pretty close. I mean, that's, that's not very scientific, but.
Mr. Thompson, if your question is, if we have the capacity as we grow with this design, the answer to that is yes. Significant growth can occur and we would, we should still be well within capacity.
We, I, I'm just, my only concern, Michael, is, is that we're going to spend this kind of money. We've got, and, and, and I don't think oil's going to go down. I don't think that, you know, they, they can't catch up with solar and, and wind farms fast enough. And so the, what's going on out here, I don't see stopping. We are what we are and the growth, the people, you know, the U-Haul and the Hertz trucks are already showing up again. And it's already a hundred and twenty-five rigs out there working. So, you know, we have these cycles and I don't see it slowing down any. And technology certainly isn't going to slow down any. And so they're going to find different ways to get this stuff out of the ground. And I don't see us, the, the city shrinking. I see it growing. I want to make sure we don't go out here and spend this kind of money and have to turn around and say, uh-oh, missed. You know, that would make us look stupid.
I mean. Mr. Thompson, I, I, our direction to the consultant was, is to not only redesign this plant to be able to accommodate us for where we are today, but certainly look at uh, not just population projections, but economic projections. I think Hutch and his team have really looked at this design and this design is, is again, one that will carry us for decades into the future.
That's all, that's all I'm.
Sorry. Uh, thank you. Good question, Steve.
Okay. No, these are good questions and, you know, so we felt like the, the maximum capacity of the plant is going to be fifty-five M G D, really. Um, so if in twen, in forty years, you need, you have a half a million dollar population, you know, we're going to keep this plant and you may have to look at another plant to work in parallel. So. Um, so again, the uh, this is some of the same improvements we talked about, you know, we're going to have a separate HVAC room. Uh, for the chlorine building. The other thing that we're going to improve, look, that is the high service pump station, the golden pump station. And the condition assessment identified minor improvements and pump, really the major pump replacement, repair and recall pipes inside the pumps, uh, replace uh, finished water, uh, finished water pumps, three, four, seven and eight. Um, the good news is that the city, uh, city is addressing several of these pump improvements. And we're, uh, pump number four, which is one of the largest pumps, will be part of this project. And we're going to also replace defective valves in the pump station. Now, electrical.
Hutch, I'm sorry, before you get off of the pumps, what is the age of some of our older pumps in, in the plant today?
Uh, um.
Tom or, or Rip, you may want to answer. I just, I just want to give the council an idea of the age of the, of the equipment that we have.
Yes, sir. I think most of these pumps were installed in the about eighty-two time period. Uh, uh, Rip, unless you have a different number, I believe about the eighty, early eighties was when this was done.
So, so almost forty-four years old.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I mean, it's typically you would, you replace these pumps every thirty years anyway. Um, we, part of this project, I mean, there's, this project is heavy on the electrical. And so we're going to have a plant-wide electrical gear. Um, will be replaced and upgraded and a new standby power generation, um, which is currently being installed. That's, that's a project that became a side project because uh, the city felt like this could not wait uh, for the, for this big project to be completed. So we're, we're handling it as a separate project and uh, we've got a contractor onsite that is uh, installing this, the new gen, backup generator at this time. We also looked at the administration building and other improvements. And uh, we're going to upgrade the administration building along with various offsite improvements. The control room will be rehabilitated with new monitoring equipment and software. The HVAC will be installed. Um, release SCADA system, the existing SCADA and communications system is antiquated. Um, so a new SCADA network will be created, replacing the old system and allowing for direct communication with the water treatment plant.
Tell me what a SCADA network is. I'm sorry, I'm ignorant.
So it's basically um, a method for control, uh, for controlling the different uh, parts of the utilities infrastructure.
Okay.
So be able to, so you know, if you're at city hall, uh, if you're at the water treatment plant and you need to communicate with the water plant and uh, or, or other remote sites, like the metering sites or other pump station distribution system, you're able to control them and or communicate with them to figure out how your overall system is working together.
Right.
Mr. Thompson, yeah, the. Mr. Thompson, yeah, the, so we receive communications through radio and computers demonstrating what the water level is in our elevated tanks around town, what pumps are on it at remote pump stations and those things. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Tom, I saw that when I was out there. Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
I mean, in, in a nutshell, these are the major improvements that's a part of this project. I want to talk a little bit about the, you know, schedule, cost estimates, other conclusions. So your water treatment plant is laid out in a way to facilitate both current and future construction needs. The space is master planned for future advanced water treatment needs. So in the event that in a few years, you know, city wants to add reverse osmosis or, or microfiltration to improve the water quality, to reduce hardness, to reduce total dissolved solids. There is, that we have left a space to allow for that. And so when we, when we worked with the city on some of these improvements, we, we kept that in the back of our mind that at some point in the future, the city may elect to do some additional improvements. The high rate, high rate plate fluctuation sedimentations basins require less footprint and will replace existing train one. In the future, the, the city can replace the remaining train due basins with high rate fluctuation sedimentation basins, freeing valuable real estate, which can be used for other improvements or for other, you know, to, to house other processes if needed. The new soft chemical building and roadwork will facilitate chemical deliveries and storage. An extended enclosed chlorine room will improve the safe delivery of hazardous chemicals. And so is the city getting a new plant or an old plant or, or just an upgrades? And then really it's a mixture of both. The city will be getting both a new and upgraded water treatment plant components. So what's new? We just talked about the twenty MGD high rate flock set basins. We've got a new soft chemical building and tank farm. Pretty much system-wide or plant-wide electrical and SCADA, that's all new. What's upgraded and rehab, rehabbing the existing filters? We're rehabbing and upgrading numerous pump stations, like the backwash, our service, you know, recycle. We're doing some hydraulic improvements to allow for the passage of fifty-five million gallons per day. And we're doing a structural rehabilitation on some of the components. So this is what, what, what the city will be getting as part of this project. And so we have a, we have a design, we're, we're going through the design. And so what is remaining, in our opinion, at this point is a ninety-five million dollars for remaining project costs. That includes the construction and, and some of the construction phase administration by the engineer. But that's really, at this point, that's the money that's remaining in addition to what the city has already committed to. So what's the schedule? We're working on the ninety-five percent.
What are we committed to? I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Thompson?
He said, what, he said, already committed to.
There are, there are improvements that, that have gone on. One of the things that Hutch mentioned, for example, was the generators that project was funded in, in a prior year.
And the generator?
Yes, sir.
Okay, got you. Just trying to make sure.
And also, you know, the engineering, the engineering design fee that we're, we're working out of. It's a design contract. So the anticipated remaining schedule, we're, we're doing the ninety-five percent final design. We're, we're working on it right now. Next month, we should send a copy to the city staff, Tom and his staff to look at. Then we will come to, to the city and have review workshops in May, twenty twenty-one. We anticipate having the bid ready documents, sealed documents sometime in July, probably close to May to the later part of July. And then we, once that is, once we seal it, we'll send it to TCEQ for review. And we think that they, they're taking about sixty to ninety days for review. And so as soon as we send it to them, we can then advertise the project. And we'll, we'll work with the purchasing to advertise the project. See who it might be interested. It does take quite a bit, you know, at least maybe a month and a half to two months for a good contract, for a good, for a contract to put a good bid together. So if the, if the funding is available, we can advertise as soon as we seal the documents. Then if we get in September and have the council approve the construct, contracted in October, the construction will start in November. And we believe at this point that it was going to take about three years for construction and startup of the facility. So November twenty twenty-four is, this project would end if, if we continue with the schedule.
And of course, that, that schedule is contingent on the next half of our conversation. That is the funding.
Yes. And this is, I mean, this is the fastest we, I mean, as far as the design, this is the fastest part of we can go with this schedule. So let's talk about new plant discussion. And I want to, I like this, this, this drawing here, the road to a new water treatment plant. So when people start thinking or cities start thinking of a water treatment plant, there's a lot of things that come into mind. Okay. First thing is, what, I mean, first of all, you identify the need. Is there a need for a new water plant or not? And so once you say, once you feel that there's a need, you have to look at the site. Where is that plant going to be? How is that going to be relative to your existing distribution system and your existing customers? Well, where, you know, the, the site location is very important because when you start looking at a new plant, it's not just the cost of the plant, it's the cost of all the other things that are associated with the plant. From a raw water delivery to high service water to, to treated water to the customers. And so once you identify the site, and usually there's a study along, you know, for that, then there's a master plan. You start looking at what are the, you know, what's the capacity of this plant? How much, you know, what type of process do we need? What type of treatment techniques do we need? Where, where, what are the improvements that are, that are required for both the raw water delivery, the electrical delivery, the, the high service, the, the distribution system delivery? What are the improvements that are needed? And you cannot put it all together in a master plan so that, you know, you make sure that you're not forgetting something. And once that is completed, then you start on the design process. You start with a preliminary design, you take it to a little bit better definition from a master plan. You know, more detailed than a master plan. You, you put, put a, put a report together, you get a, an estimated construction cost, you know, level four, which is really a, a planning level. And then from that, you go to the final design. And similar to what we're doing here with this current project, then after that, you go to regulatory review. And you make sure that you've got the money to bid the project. And then from there, you do the construction, the startup, and then use. So I call a green, I call a new plant, a greenfield plant. Some people call it just a new water plant. But what are the key costs associated with building a greenfield plant? It's the plant itself, the site, the real estate, raw water delivery, electrical, distribution system modifications, associated planning permitting, environmental, engineering costs, et cetera. So how much is a new plant? And, and you know, there's not a magic number. Well, we reviewed construction cost of eleven greenfield water treatment plants that were Corolla projects that we've done in the last fifteen years or so. And these costs were for plant only. They were bid between two thousand and five and twenty twenty. And the capacities ranged from twelve million gallons per day to three hundred and twenty million gallons per day. And then we adjusted the cost for inflation, inflation and location factors, mostly using the engineering news records, which publishes monthly inflation and, and location factor costs. And so, so that, you know, so that we can make these costs more current. And so we added the anticipated planning, engineering and permitted costs. And with that, the adjusted cost range, it was between two point two gallons and nine point four gallons. So not knowing exactly all the details, we felt like an average of four point four gallons would probably be a good, a good number here. And so we also assessed the other related plant costs for the city. So the site deal estate, you know, to save money, Tom was telling me that the city owns a site close to the plant. So there will be no additional cost for that. Raw water delivery, raw, you know, we will need to modify or have raw water delivery modifications for the new site. New electrical, new distribution system modifications. And I'm looking at some of the other projects we looked at in the past. Big ballpark costs are anywhere between thirty to eighty million dollars for a conditioned microdeserts. And so we said, let's take an average of fifty-five million for this project. So when we do, when we want to, you know, if you look at a new plant, a new fifty-five MGD conventional water treatment plant, with all of that, we, the cost would probably be close to three hundred million dollars. Two ninety-seven. And so we also looked at the schedule. So the site identification and evaluation, typically this is a one, one year, you know, eight to eight months to one year evaluation. But since this, the, the city had already identified an appropriate location, we're just thinking it's going to be a two-month period. But then the master plan identification of improvements will take another twelve months. A preliminary design will, will take about twelve months. Final design will take about two years. TCEQ review, bid phase and award will take four years, four months. Construction startup, thirty, you know, thirty-six months. So a total on a good, you know, that's, a good, is ninety months. That's assuming we have the site identified. And that's that the site is suitable. So how do costs compare, you know? So the anticipated remaining cost for the current plant improvements are about ninety-five million dollars based on what we, what currently we, we, we know. And, and, and then for a new plant, I guess it's closer, it's two hundred ninety-seven million. So, you know, a lot of people, the reason why they, they upgraded existing facilities is because it's a lot less costly. Because you still have your existing infrastructure to use. And based on schedule, you know, we feel that in about forty-five months or so, this project should be started and completed at the current project. Whereas if you, if you go with a brand new plant from now, it's going to be another seven and a half years from when you started. And so I guess this, this concludes my discussion, my presentation, and we'll open it for additional questions, comments.
Hutch, this is Councilman Thompson again. How many, how, how many contractors are out there that are able to bid the job these things?
So I have, I mean, I have been, I mean, they, they, for this, for a project like this, it's going to have to be a large contractor that has done water treatment plans. I have been contacted by at least two or three major contractors that are very interested in this project. Yeah, I, I would expect at least three. I mean, this is a, this is a size project that some of the national contractors may be, may be wanting to, to be, may, will be interested in, in my opinion. And a lot of them will, our local subcontractors going to help them with the work.
Councilman Thompson, I, I've also heard from the contractor who did the Midland plant job recently. That may be one of them that Corolla, that Hutch has heard from, but I know that they've shown interest in the project as well.
Anybody else have any questions, comments?
Michael, do we, is there another portion of this presentation or is this the total thing?
We have a second portion to this, Mayor, to discuss the debt part of this issuance.
Okay, Cindy, go ahead.
Okay, Hutch, if you can quit sharing your screen, then I will start sharing mine.
Mayor, I was talking, Mayor, this is Michael. I, I was on mute, but yes, Cindy, thanks for saving me. But yes, that was the technical side. This is the, the, the presentation portion that deals primarily with the financing of a possible project.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, could everyone see my screen now? Should say debt financing by Texas Cities.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So first off, we're going to talk a little bit about what options the city has as far as issuing debt to pay for large projects like this. Some of the council members that have been on for a couple of years have looked at this presentation before, but we felt that it was important to present again for the newer members and make sure everyone understands what kind of financing the city is able to do. And so we've invited our financial advisor, Mr. George Wilford from Hilltop Securities to go through this. And after he's completed, you know, talking about what kind of financing, he's put together some schedules of what the debt might look like for us. And then we'll talk some more about what availabilities the city actually has. So I'll let George go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Cindy, Mayor and members of the council. Cindy indicated George Wilford with Hilltop. And just to let you know, I've been working with the city since nineteen ninety-six, so I've been a privilege. The presentation we put together is really condensed from one we've given, I guess, a year and a half or so ago. But it really, I think, is most pertinent elements with respect to what's being discussed, potential financing for the water treatment plant. The first portion, if you'll go to the next page, Cindy, just discusses what financial instruments or options does a city in Texas have? And some of these are not necessarily relevant with respect to something as significant as water treatment plant. But as you'll see, this is a matrix and we've got a sheet on each of these. Geo bonds, certificates of obligation, utility revenue bonds in this case. And then the last three tax notes, public property contractual obligations and contract revenue bonds really would not be suitable for this type project. On the next page, you'll see information with respect to a geo bond. And of course, geo bonds can be voted for any type of authorized capital expenditure by a city and so on. The important part there is that if, for instance, you voted geo bonds and said that you were going to support them out of the water and sewer system, then you would not have to set a tax, even though they would be secured by property tax. Repayment could be provided from revenues of the system. I believe down at the bottom of this page, actually it's on the next, but I'm going to go ahead and mention the legislature in the last session passed an amendment that says if you vote geo bonds for any purpose, whether, even if it's self-supported utility function and so on, and that election fails. and that election fails, then you're prohibited from issuing certificates of obligation to finance those improvements for a three-year period. So a lot of my city clients have really taken that to heart when they're looking at the options and so on, because they don't want to be in a position that, for whatever reason, that can't do the financing for that, that lengthy period. This page that Cindy brought up, you'll notice that statement down at the bottom. But this is relevant, discussing certificates of obligation, and they've been authorized since 1971 for use by cities. I will go ahead and mention that there is an effort, it wouldn't really be pertinent in this case if you were going to make it self-supported. But in the legislature this session, to make tax-supported COs not exempt from rollback like they've been and like all other debt is. But at any rate, a CO, you have to post and publish notice. And this needs to be updated, and the calendar is updated. In this case, it shows 31 days. Actually, the publication has to begin at least 45 days before the council would contemplate or plan to come back and authorize issuance and approve sale. As it shows, they can be used for really the, all the same purposes that geo bonds can be used for. They, because they're secured by the property tax, they'd have the same rating, the same interest rate as issuance of geo bonds. But again, if the repayment was going to be provided or supported by water and sewer system, you wouldn't set a tax rate, wouldn't have to. You'd just enjoy the benefit of that credit enhancement. But the debt service would be provided by net revenues. And even the rating agencies recognize that when they're doing an analysis of a city, and they treat that as not tax-supported debt. So it doesn't ding you or, or affect you as far as their analysis of debt burden and so on. The next page just discusses, I believe, tax notes. And again, they can only be repaid for up to seven years, so they would not be relevant for this type project. The next page is water and sewer revenue bonds, or really revenue bonds in general. But they're payable from a specific revenue source. In this case, utility revenues and so on. They're going to be at a higher interest rate because they're not going to be as highly rated as certificates of obligation or geo bonds, because they're strictly secured by the revenues of that system, not by the property tax base and so on. And because of that, that very last bullet point applies that, given potential volatility of revenues and so on, from a credits perspective, you have to provide a debt service reserve fund that is equal to annual debt service, so that the issue has to be sized up to provide that. And then you're going to have mandatory coverage levels for, to maintain. And then particularly to ever consider issuance of additional revenue-supported debt. They, that have to be met on a continuing basis. And this is where it can really be impactful to a water and sewer system, because, for instance, if you issue certificates of obligation, you could have debt service and have your rate structure so that it provided a little bit more, and this is probably worst case, than the annual debt service, so that you knew you could make the payments. If you're issuing revenue debt, then you're going to be looking at to be decently rated, well-rated, at least one and a half times. So that means that whatever the debt service is, you'd have to show that actual operations provided debt service plus another half. And so that can mean that in order to support a revenue issue, you're going to be looking at higher water and sewer rates than what would be otherwise required. The next page, again, is not really pertinent. This is contract revenue bonds. And this is in joint projects or where you're dealing with a master entity that's financing on behalf of others, as it says, river authorities and water districts. And so this is comparable to what Colorado River Municipal Water District does on behalf of City of Odessa and its other member cities when financing one of the pipelines or reservoirs and so on. Go ahead, Cindy. And then the last one is just for financing a personal property. But those are the types of instruments or the specific instruments that are authorized for financing of any capital need by cities in the state of Texas. The next page shows the individuals or firms who are involved in the issuance process in quickly. Typically, that's the financial advisor, bond counsel, who actually is engaged by the city to do the legal side and also give opinion of legality and tax, whether it's tax exempt or not, underwriters who actually sell the bonds on behalf of the city. But again, they're not operating as a fiduciary, and that's why it's our job as financial advisor. And we are obligated as a fiduciary to oversee that what they do is reasonable and at market levels and so on. And then they'll have counsel that does certain review and due diligence from a market perspective and regulatory perspective. Down on the bottom, you'll have a paying agent bank. That's who you send your payments to every six months. And then who remits those payments through a depository trust company to all individual holders. And then most importantly, the rating agencies, because debt issuance by cities, counties and other governmental entities, particularly the project of this size, you want to have a, a good, as high a debt rating level as possible, which means you're going to have lower interest rates. And the three major firms are Moody's, Standard and Poor's and Fitch. And the other two, bond insurers and trustees are not necessarily applicable in this case. This is the rating scale that the three rating agencies provide. Of course, the highest is AAA. To City of Odessa, your general obligation or your general debt rating, which applies to your COs as it stands, is AA2 by Moody's and A+ by Standard and Poor's. And the reason for that split, I'll be honest with you, Standard and Poor's instituted new pension methodology about a year or so ago. And I have two other clients, and in your case, the fireman's pension plan and its status is what resulted in them dropping Odessa out of the AA category to that A+. But your AA2 with Moody's, A+ with Standard and Poor's right now. This is just the issuance process, and you're essentially at phase one with respect to, as Hutch said, the project itself determining how to move forward. But that also applies to the financing, how you're going to undertake financing that project. And so this is just development of a financing program and an ultimate plan of finance. Once the council determined, here's how we want to move forward, then we would work in that phase two to actually structure and say, this is the way the, the bond issue, debt issue is going to be structured, how it's going to be planned to be sold and all. Phases three through five, really three through six, all fit together, and that's really the issuance process itself. I'm going to just say with respect to, let's say, a certificate of obligation issue. And really, it would apply even if you were doing another. That's going to run anywhere from 45 to more realistically 60 days, that phase three timeframe. Then you have to allow another 30 days, because in Texas, every debt issuance by governmental entity has to be submitted to the Attorney General for their review and approval and release to close. And we typically allow about 30 days. So from council start for the authorization process, you'll see this in a minute on a calendar, to sale, again, nearly 60 days. To close, you're talking more like a 90-day time period. What Cindy mentioned is we developed schedules to specifically illustrate financing that's being discussed. And you'll see about middle ways down under uses on both columns, 95 million. So that's what we're talking about is everything sized to provide 95 million a project proceeds. You'll notice at the top on the sources in the market, particularly now with, with real interest rates being at still very, very low levels. You'll actually issue less debt than money you receive for the project and other costs and so on. And in this case, we're saying 84 to 85 million dollars. You'll see on the next page what we're talking about. That's caused because of what, what's termed reoffering premium. And if you look, column B is the principal amount of each maturity. Column C are what's called coupon interest rates. And that's the cash payment rates that the market prefers at any given point in time. Right now, they're wanting five, four and five percent coupon rates. The market level, though, is what's in column D. That's the actual yields that are real market yields. And so if they're only getting a yield, I'll take that longest maturity of 2.81%, but they're receiving a 4% coupon. They're going to pay above the face amount of that 6.14 to get that. And that's in column E. So it's nearly a 10%, 9.7% premium on that one maturity. When you aggregate it, you're going to actually, if you face amount 84 to 20, you'll also receive that 11,773 of premium on the far right-hand side. And together, that provides 95 million plus enough for cost of issuance. So that's just an example. I didn't want to get hung up in that. What we did is structured the debt two different ways. Schedule one is a certificate of obligation issue that's structured to provide 95 million. And we assumed interest rates roughly 100 basis points above current market rates. And it kind of ties what Councilman Thompson said earlier about construction costs. There's concern that longer-term rates may be heading upward as time goes by. So when we're putting together any kind of projection that's got time associated between now and issuance, we try to be conservative. So again, this is about 100 basis points over current market. So if you were in the market today on a 20-year repayment issue, which this is, you'd expect that the rate would be 2% or even a little less on a tax-exempt AA-rated issue. In this case, the new issue is structured with level annual debt service. You'll see that in column E, that on the new issue, combined principal and interest, about 6.26 million per year. Now, combined to what's in column B, which is your existing debt service, that's around six and a half or 6.56 million, that runs through 2027. You'll see in column F, for those years through 27, your combined water and sewer-supported debt service would be about 12.8 million dollars. The next schedule, we structured it different, and it's kind of an extreme. You could do a less extreme, what we call wrap. But in this case, we ran interest-only through 2027, and then started amortization of principal on the, the new issue for the 95 million. And what that does is it, it has less impact on the ratepayers and so on going in to the deal. Like I said, you could have some small amount of principal. It's, it's a matter of what the system could tolerate and what water rates you were looking at as far as potential increase. But in this case, instead of what we discussed, that 12.8 million, your total debt service through 2027 on an annual basis would be about 10.2. So you can see that that's about 2.6 million a year less than schedule one. So that's the difference between the two structures. What we also did is took the same scenarios and said, well, instead of issuing certificates of obligation, what if we tried to put together a revenue bond structure, which has some complexity in developing it and so on, because you have to create really a whole structure that then will tie on a go-forward basis that says, here's the mandated coverage, here are the reserve requirements and, and a lot of others. So it kind of adds the time. But in this case, if you'll notice, under uses, in particular, the debt service reserve fund, that's sized in. And so in addition to the 95 million and costs, you've got that being sized in and really amortized over the life of the deal as well. You can see it's 6.9 million, that's on a level basis, 8.9 if it was a wraparound structure. And that's because you're deferring principal and really driving up. And so therefore, the amount of the reserve is going to be higher too. We can look at the, not the next page, it's the pricing summary again that explains the premium. But this is the schedule of level annual debt service for a water and assumed water and sewer revenue issue. And you can see the rate in this case is assumed at three and a quarter percent. We're assuming that water and sewer debt, revenue debt without a tax pledge would sell, and this is pretty realistic, at an interest rate based on an assumed rating of 50 basis points or half a percent higher than COs. And so in this case, with a reserve fund and that increased interest cost, instead of 6.2 million a year, the level annual debt service would be 6.94. So that instead of 12.8 million, the overall annual debt service would be around 700,000 a year, higher through 27 or 13 and a half million for system-supported debt. And then the last page of schedules, again, just has a wraparound structure. You'll see the interest cost is, is higher because of the added size and the added 50 basis points. And so even on an interest-only basis for a new issue, your overall water and sewer-supported debt service would be about 10.7 million a year until 2027, and the old debt dropped off. But those are the structures that tied to the options. I meant to say any questions, I'd be glad to, to answer, but we also put together a calendar. And it was structured to conform to what Mr. Masolom said earlier. If the expected bid timeframe was September of 2021, this provides that issuance or authorization of issuance and sale could occur by mid-September as well, because you have to legally have the means to make payment in order to enter into contract on a project. So this is typical that the issuance ties to the bidding timeframe, so that once bids are received and a best bid determined, you'd be in a position to actually enter into a contract. This provides, like I said, for council authorizing issuance and approving sale at a September 14th meeting and going back, like I said, to the time required on certificates of obligation to publish notice and so on. It means that the council would be required at the latest to act on a resolution that authorized giving that notice of intent to issue at the July 27th meeting. And given this whole calendar, what it means is you'd receive the funds from the issuance in mid-October.
So does anybody have questions from George at this point?
Cindy, this is, hey, what, so, so tell me, tell me, I mean, I guess, George, the question is, is it, is it smarter for us to, I mean, I know we've got some, we've got the Pioneer Mooney coming, and I know we've got some, some pretty healthy reserves. And I know we've got some some pretty healthy reserves. Is there is there any any reason we shouldn't pay some cash for this? Or is the pioneer money or some, I mean, rather than issue COs and raise water?
Okay, and that, those are questions that we're gonna work on next. I've pulled up, you know, the impact of what this debt is. So if no one has any specific questions of George about the different types of issuances, then we'll continue on on what maybe some of our options are.
Anybody have questions for George?
I'd like George to stay on, though, because.
Yes, sir, I will.
We're talking about, maybe some places about how it impacts other obligations, which I don't know about.
Okay, and so this first schedule talks about the different debt issuances. And and this is assuming we went with a certificate of obligation. And one of the, kind of a quick synopsis of what George said is you could do water revenue bonds. Those do not require a vote of the citizenry, because this is being paid for out of the water sewer fund, which is an enterprise fund. And so the users of that are are the customers that actually take water and sewer from the city. So the certificate of obligation gives you that guarantee of a tax guarantee. But when you say that you're going to self support it out of your water sewer fund, then you're not actually affecting the property tax rate. So that gives you the best of both worlds in that you can, you have a cheaper cost than the revenue bonds. And yet, and you still can rely on your tax qualification, but not on those tax dollars. The city has issued COs for many years and we have never pulled money from general fund to help pay any debt of the water sewer fund.
But Cindy, does it, let me ask a question, but it does affect your water and sewer rate?
It will affect water sewer rates, and and that's what we're looking at here. So basically, we make interest payments on debt twice a year, but we make principal payments once a year. So in effect, we just call this once a year. These are the interest rates, two point eight five, two point nine five. And what the amount of the payments would be just for the new debt. This does not take into effect the old debt, which is already covered by our operations today. This will last through twenty twenty seven. And at that point, the wraparound debt would actually increase because we will start making principal payments. So if we use the wraparound debt in twenty twenty eight, then the payments would go up, as y'all saw in the schedules before. So current twenty twenty one water sewer revenue budget without pioneer monies is fifty six point six million. And so it would be needed amount of additional payment on the new issuance. That would create, if we went with a level debt service payment, about eleven point oh seven percent increase. Or the wraparound debt would be six point four three percent. Our current water bill for, or rate for a five thousand gallon user on a three quarter inch meter is fifty seven dollars and forty cents. So this increase would take them up to sixty three seventy six under a level debt service or sixty one dollars and eight cents. And that's both water and sewer rates. So, you know, of course, we always talk about what our pioneer money is being utilized for. And let me skip down to this schedule a minute. This is a detail of what we've done with pioneer revenue since the beginning. And you can see the green highlights show each fiscal year end. So at September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, we were sitting at thirty one million. A big portion of that was encumbered under the design contract for the water treatment rehab. So during the twenty year, we actually, we budgeted ten and a half million. We actually had eight point five under that contract with Pioneer. They do have some options to bank. When they overuse their minimum, they can bank that overused amount. And so when the COVID nineteen hit, they had actually taken less money this, less water this year than they had in the past, because they used a portion of that bank. Then we have investment income and then, of course, our, I'm sorry, our expenditures. And, well, this is so touchy, I'm sorry. And the net position that we're estimating at this point for the twenty year end is thirty six point three million. We've got outstanding encumbrances of eleven point two out of that. So that leaves us about twenty five million. We have started the project for the sewer line P extension project. That's about thirty million. We've actually gone through the process of qualifying bidders for that project. And we should be ready to get bids in within the next few weeks and award that bid. And so we were determined to use pioneer monies for that. At this point, when we made that choice, we said we had some funds left over in our in our fund balance that's above the required amount we should hold in unrestricted of a hundred and eighty days of expenditures. And so we have covered the cost of the line P through what we've had in pioneer monies banked and a little bit from fund balance. So I want to go back to this schedule and talk about what we have coming in the future for pioneer monies. This is an estimate based on the take or pay contract and with them possibly utilizing some of their bank. So we're looking at these amounts for each of the upcoming fiscal years. Some of the projects that we had initially talked about covering in a new debt issuance, but we've dropped that out to just be the plant, are the new sewer line queue for the northeast area, the water line that will need to be done at some point, elevated storage tanks, some of the southwest improvements, and then additional funding for a repair and replacement of our deteriorating stuff. So those are possible uses there. You could also entertain using some of the pioneer revenue to help offset some of the cost of the new debt issuance to help make those payments. The thing you have to remember is you have to pay these as you get the money in. So you don't have the whole seventy two million until the end of twenty seven. So that's one of the things that you're gonna have to work, will have to work with in using those to either pay the debt. Or it it's not like we have that money available right now to go towards the payment of the plant. That's money that comes in over the next six, seven years. And you will have to watch how we spend that if we're going to use it on additional development type projects that are out there. So I want to talk a little bit about what we have in fund balance for our water and sewer fund. And I'm basing this on our on our audited annual report for nine thirty nineteen, because we're in the midst of our current year audit for nine thirty twenty, and it's not complete yet. So if you look at our our annual financial report, it looks like we have a huge balance, sixty five million. Thirty one million of that is the pioneer money, which we've just seen that that's obligated. We had some additional outstanding encumbrances, which are not reflected outside of the unrestricted balance. So that leaves us a net amount of thirty two million. Our credit agencies that we mentioned earlier, FITS, Standards and Poor's, Moody's, recommend that you have a hundred and eighty days of your operating expenditures in your unrestricted fund balance. This improves your credit ratings, it helps you get the lower interest rate to stay as a double A rated issuer. And so if you don't maintain that to show proof that you have the ability to pay, if you have a drought year or you have something happening, you cannot make your payments, then you can use your unrestricted fund balance to help with that. So that left us the excess amount that I showed on the screen a while ago. So this shows the calculation of the hundred and eighty days, which is half a year. Our projected revenues, expenditures, and net was just under a million dollars for nineteen twenty. I think we'll come in higher than that, but it won't be a significant amount higher. And last but not least, y'all saw this schedule in your budget and to talk about what we've done with water and sewer rate increases in the past. You know, we did a huge one back in eleven, twelve, and twelve thirteen. We went to a tiered water rate system. And then we had a big drought year that that caused us a lot of problems. As a member city of CRMWD, we have to maintain, help maintain their debt through what we have to pay them. So our costs had to increase. We did an eight percent rate increase in two thousand fifteen sixteen on our water rates. And then just this past year, we did a small two and a half percent increase on both water and sewer rates. Part of the reasoning for doing that was to to start spending more of our operating, yearly operating expenses to help take care of our deteriorating water and sewer lines, valves, and things like that. And so ideally, I think we would like for that annual expense to be at a minimum, probably six million dollars. We've actually got it up to three and a half million, a little over three and a half million right now with the two and a half percent that we did for twenty twenty one. So obviously, it's a go for management and operations is to get that number higher so that we can take care of these things on a go forward basis, instead of having crises when something breaks. And we we've seen those in the last year or two as well. And so this is kind of to give y'all some ideas of how we pay for this plant rehab. There's different scenarios that we can put together. We by no means have the money to just pay for the plant upfront. You want to maintain, like I said, your good fund balance in order to make your debt issuance be as favorable as you can have it to be. In in twenty twenty seven, our current debt is paid out. So it's typical that you're issuing debt to do major projects periodically. That's the only way the city has to pay for it at this point. We will be talking, you know, we've looked at impact fees and other things to help with new development areas. So we're trying different things to help pay for those types of issues. And so George and I'll be ready to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, does anybody have questions?
George, this is Councilman Thompson. What, I mean, surely you've looked at all these different options. As as our financial advisor, do you have one preference over another? Basically, given our current situation? I'm gonna put you on the spot.
Sorry, I was muted.
Yeah.
Yes, and Cindy alluded to, originally, we had looked at starting with no use of cash and then various applications. So we had run for the utility improvements, if I'm not mistaken, up to a hundred and thirty million financing. And then, you know, the analysis of cash, you shrunk it back down to really the net required for the water treatment plant. And and like I hope came through and like Cindy indicated, every one of my city clients in Texas, and the only one that that I've worked with that doesn't really do it is City of El Paso, because they have a separate water and utility system, more or less separately governed. But every one of them uses certificates of obligation to finance their utility improvements and have for a number of years, because it's better credit rating, lower interest costs, less impactful and restrictive on their citizens and their systems. So from my standpoint, if if the council says, yes, we need to undertake the treatment plant project and finance it, I would recommend using COs. And and that, quite frankly, gives the public the ability to see the project and and consider a petition if they don't agree that there needs to be improvements to contest that and so on. I would probably recommend structurally something, either a full wrap or some modified wraparound, again, to pull down that impact on the rate base for the next six years or so. So hopefully, that answers your question.
Yeah.
This is Mark Motta here, I have, I got a question. In all these scenarios that we saw, we saw scenarios for certificate of obligation and for revenue bonds. But we didn't see any for for GO bonds. And looking at this chart here, it shows that that's got the strongest, best rates. Why weren't there any scenarios, we could have seen the the different rates for those also?
Well, the interest rates for a GO bond issue would be exactly the same as for a certificate of obligation, because once COs are are actually issued or in the process, they become the equivalent of GO debt. For instance, if you refinance certificates of obligation, they're refinanced as general obligation refunding bond. So from a rate standpoint, there's no difference. I failed to mention, on GO bonds, you can only undertake elections twice a year, and that's May and November. And in this case, it's too late to have a May. So the earliest the council could look at even an election would be November of twenty one, which would throw first ability to issue into early twenty two at the very earliest. And so aside from the election process you're dealing with, well, what are interest rates and costs and all gonna do tied to that type delay as well? But the interest rate, if you could do them at the same time, it would be the same for a GO and a CO.
George, also, if 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 the election fails, then we gotta wait three years to do it again, right?
You could, you could go through another bond election, but you could not say, we'll we'll issue COs. The current law says you're locked out for three years, yes, sir.
So then you're, so Mark, then your, then your hundred million becomes two hundred million.
Well, that, 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 well, that's, that's, that's estimating that it would fail.
Exactly, I mean, I mean, that's assuming that, that's assuming that the citizens of this city aren't gonna be educated enough to want to pass this, I mean, they all, they all see the need for this.
Mark, Mark, we can't advertise, we can't run a campaign. We can't run a campaign for for an election like that.
We can educate, and it is a big difference in that. But, you know, and the thing is, is that that's been used in the past about that, that the COs, the the COs is basically cutting out the 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 citizens from speaking up on it and then relating them into the back of having to forcefully disapprove into a petition to be able to get it on the election, then forcing the election. And so it become, becomes an us versus them situation. And and I understand that it's been used in the past, because this is the 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 path of least resistance. But in in the essence, this is something this community has has not liked. And and in in the last CO that was passed at a hundred, over a hundred and ninety million dollars, no one disagreed with the expenditures, nobody disagreed with the projects. In fact, there was. In fact, there was one hundred, almost a hundred percent favorability. All they simply asked is one thing, let us be a part of the process and let us in debt ourselves. This, 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 this project should have been, we started it and discussed in twenty seventeen. It should have even been further back than that.
We can't change it.
And we're talking about, oh, you know what? We can't do this because we already passed the date on the May, in May and November. And now we have this, we're pushing this thing right in here in this work session. When, when I basically had asked for this to be pushed off into the, into the, into, into the retreat. And now we are once again discussing it. And, 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 but the thing is, is that the scenarios have all been placed to not even discuss the, the, the general obligations. And now we're having a recommendation by, by, by our financiers that we should be using the COs. And I understand, I mean, you didn't have to go there, but you know, you went ahead and, 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 and put that scenario out, which I completely, well, I'm not going to agree with to one hundred percent. You know, and but I understand the both scenarios, you know, the thing is you do run a risk of, 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 of losing it. But there's also a risk that we will have a petition by the citizens who will be irate because once again, we, we, we've already, we've already bypassed them in, in, in twenty, in, 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 in the last one, which was what, twenty nineteen? And now we're putting this whole thing in front and we're, you know, and COs and the wraparound, we're doing all that. And let me tell you, it, it's going to be a frustrating situation here.
Javier, let me just say, two things. One, same five thousand people are going to sign that application. They're going to vote against, they vote against the, 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 uh, vote against the same five thousand people vote no. There's going to be five thousand people vote no. And on a off-year election, which is what you'll have in November, you're going to have a real low turnout. And your chance of passing that bond issue are going to be low and none. The second question is, you as mayor and us as a council, we have to, we have to turn around and look the people in the eye when that plant fails. We deliver quality water because the bond issue fails. What do you do? Go back and tell the public, it's your fault, not our fault because you wouldn't pass the bond issue. I don't think that floats. I don't think that flies. I think we're hired, we were elected to do the best fiscal, financial responsibility citizens of Odessa because they don't have all these numbers. And there's no way to communicate all these numbers and all these scenarios to the general public where they can understand it. And we can't issue, we can't go out there and run an advertising campaign that, that can even, I mean, can't do it, right, Michael? Michael?
Sorry, Mr. Thompson. We have some limitations. And George, I think for the sake of the council, so they understand fully what our limitations are as a city in terms of advocacy for a general obligation bond. Can you walk us through that, please?
Yes, sir. And a lot of times bond counsel can even elaborate on it. But as a governmental entity and even the individuals are precluded from advocating for passage of any kind of measure related to debt, just like other elections and so on. And as I believe the mayor said, you can present facts, factual information with regard to this is what's proposed and what the proposed bond issue would finance. But you're limited even to the extent of, of using what the Ethics Commission deems leading phrases or words. So if you're describing the existing treatment plant, you can't say need, this would solve needs or we need this or anything like that. You could just describe, this is what's going to be done and this is how the proceeds would be used.
That puts us, Javier, that puts us at a great big disadvantage. And if you, with the growth we've got going on Javier, how can you wait years? Now, now you're, now you're several years behind the curve.
We've waited over ten years already on this project. This was with us when it should have been started, ten years ago.
That's irresponsible, but years. There's got to be some kind of a combination method we can use. That's why I kind of like that wraparound method because
I understand it.
Because it, it gives us a chance to use some cash and, and, and we can tell them that we, and we're not going up. My, what I would
Water rates and sewer rates will go up.
Right. We, we don't have to go up on water and sewer rates.
We, we It won't go up.
Up on water and sewer rates for inflation. Anyway, Javier, I mean, it's, inflation's coming. Don't kid yourself.
I'm not, Tom, I am not. But the thing is, is that you're advocating for COs and that's fine.
No, I'm not. I'm saying some kind of a rack. I'm saying there's got to be some kind of nation we can use. We can use some cash and, and some, and some COs. I'm not saying use all COs. I'm saying let's find a way to use some of both.
What can we also implement for, I just want to take care of this issue, but Mr. Thompson is talking about future population growth. Let's take the Bellis Park, for instance. I mean, that's, that's added a lot more people here, a lot, a lot more water use. Why can't we implement a MUD? And that's going, that'd be the same thing as the, as what the E-cut is right now, basically. That's going to provide financial help for, for this growth. So obviously we can, so we can implement changes into the water treatment plant whenever it needs to, whenever we have to provide improvements so we can increase the production.
It's something we can discuss.
I think that's something, Mark, that we certainly could look at. But I think it's important that we go into it with, you know, with an open mind because it's, the water treatment plant is not in good condition. And we've got to do something and we've got to move fairly quickly in doing something. I'm sure you guys have taken the tour. And of course, the public can't go in there and look around and see that. But we have some conditions that must be addressed because it's not a matter of when it, if it breaks down, it's when. And we've got to address it and we've got to do something fairly quickly. We do have options. And so, you know, as Mark said, we can look at that for, for the, for the future. But I think for right now, we've got to wrap our heads around something that will work and something that will work quickly. If we keep kicking the can down the road, we get the same thing. I mean, we, 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 we owe it to the citizens of Odessa. Yes, to be financially astute and fiscal responsibility. But we also owe it to them to not have our water systems fail. And then we have to tell them that, you know, we're sorry, but you got what you got. That's, that's, that's not, I don't believe that's not what we as a council should do. We've got to do something. It's, 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 it's to the point. And I, I don't want to put, put fault on anybody that it's been kicked down the road, but it's been kicked down the road and, and
Yes, it has.
Where we cannot kick it any longer. I mean, we owe it to the citizens of Odessa.
And nobody, and nobody's talking about kicking it down the road. You know, the thing is, is that, you know, you have, everybody here on the council is going to have to get comfortable with two things. Either you're going to, you're going to issue certificates of obligation and you can bundle it up any of the way you want and kick the, the citizens out of the process, or you can allow the citizens to in debt themselves. Those are your two options. And that's what the council is going to have to consider in, 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 in this process. And it's either going to have to be done in November or it's going to, or it's going to be done immediately in, in, in the schedule that we've seen today. And those are the two main factors that everybody on the council is going to have to consider. I'm just putting it out there. This is, these, and, and, and both of them are going to have some dire consequences, in my opinion.
Let's, but also, does everybody under, I mean, I happen to know, and this is one of the things that's concerning me, Javier, is that, is I know there's another thousand home subdivision in Yukon and Farquhar to go out north. Thousand homes.
Understand it.
Now, Scott, Scott Tiny is out there doing infrastructure as we speak, another one thousand homes.
Understand it. And this one agreement isn't going to be online by, by the time those things come on. You know, they're going to be simultaneously. You know.
And our growth is not, our growth is not stopping, it's going. And I think, I think we're elected
But that doesn't address the issue of how we're going to in debt this thing.
You go look at these situations and make the best decision for the public. You feel the other way around. And I knew we were going to, but surely there's some kind of a compromise we can all come to. Not well to compromise on it.
Okay.
But I, I just don't, I don't, Javier, if you don't understand anything else I've said today about this whole deal, I don't think we can take the risk of it failing. I'm not saying it would. I'm saying the risk of it failing. And then you're three, then you have kicked it down the road. You're kicked down the road seven more years. That's twenty, according to your numbers. And that, that, by that time, you're going to be in deep trouble. In my opinion.
Understand that. Anybody have any other questions or comments?
Well, the only comment I would make is that if we're going to do this through obligation bonds, then we need to put the wastewater treatment plant with it and quit kicking it down the road. Because there's another ninety million dollars that we're going to need to spend sometime in the future.
Okay.
I don't, I'm not familiar with that, Tom. I, I haven't seen those. I just, I know that line P is going to help. I think we'll leave a lot, a lot of that. I know we got a problem down there. I just don't, I'm just not aware of the severity of it.
Is there any, any more, any more comments and questions on this? On, on all of, on the whole thing, as far as the presentation on the technical, excuse me, I'm sorry. And on the technical and also on the, on the funding or options of funding and things of that nature, any more to add? And this is a work session, so this is basically information that we are seeking for, for our knowledge and enrichment. So everybody's good?
Mayor, this is, this is Michael.
Yes, sir.
We can certainly bring this back to the council to discuss at a later date with any additional information. So I guess for our purposes, being staff, is there any additional information that council may need as it relates to the water treatment plant or financing at that plant? So we can make sure we prepare exactly what you may need.
Michael, yeah. Michael, do me one favor. I'd, I'd like to see, I'd like with George to figure out how, how much, and maybe this will help us all a little bit. I'd like to figure out how much cash we could afford to put in the project without damaging our current situations, our current obligations and, and, and then doing the rest of the COs. I think that, you know, if we told the public we were putting half of it, paying for half of it in cash, you know, that, that might be an option. I don't know.
I mean, the, the question is, can we even afford, you know, to be able to do that?
That's my question. I just like the numbers.
So you, you're asking for the numbers and then, and also from the, 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 where, where that cash could come from?
Right.
Okay, okay. Michael, can y'all do that?
We can look at that, Mayor, but Cindy went over a, a, a chart earlier that really talked about what we have available in our fund balance versus our obligations, plus the requirement to have operating income available. So if you want that number, it's, it's, it's not significant at all. I think what we have in excess is, is beyond obligations and beyond operating expenditures is only about five point three million dollars.
And then the other one would be from the pioneer. Those are projected numbers.
Well, they are.
Good. Sorry, Cindy.
I'm sorry, Mayor. They are, they are protected as of what we have today.
Yes.
With the Line P project. And so the, the purpose of showing you what our next few years' monies are is for those options. I mean, whether you want to use some of that cash to either help make the payments on the debt or use those funds to look at the new development costs that we have out there. And so that's why I kind of put them side by side because we know that we are going to have to expand development. At what point, we're not sure. You know, we're trying to not have to come back with another issuance in a year or two to do that before we use those monies. So these are the options we were trying to put forth to y'all in addition to the debt issuance.
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Off the top of my head, Javier, we're looking back at those new developments, which can be used for future projects, which means we could do those impact fees to fund the line P, which is what, thirty one million, Cindy?
Line P is thirty million, yes, sir.
Thirty million, and then use thirty million to fund the new water treatment plan. That's a third of it in cash. That, there'd be another option.
The only thing I would add to that, Mr. Thompson, is that your impact fees would have to be really high in order to generate that level of revenue.
Yeah, and, and then that, then we wind up competing, then we wind up competing with our neighbor where I impact fees are far, far much higher.
You want now?
So then we start competing with our neighbor to the ease where, you know, and, and then they, it, it, we, we, we wind up being at a higher impact fee, which then makes it uncompetitive.
We don't have any water. We lose the Midland, too.
I'm just, I'm just putting it out there, Tom. I'm just putting, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, see, I'm just putting it out. You know, that's something you have to consider.
I mean, you know, we're in competition all the way around.
Okay, just, 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 you know, I understand, you know, and, and at this point, I'm not ready to step off that ledge on that one. But, you know, you know, understand that it is.
Mr. Marrow?
Yes, sir.
Right now, you're basically the, using the hundred eighty days of operating expenditures that, you know, if we topped it, all we have available is five million, right?
According to, as of today, Cindy, can you go back to that, please?
I was looking at five point, like five point three million. So I mean, that's
Yeah.
That'd be, that'd be kind of crazy to deplete that and then hurt our credit rating. Works for just such a small amount. We're looking at a hundred million dollars.
Mr. Monta, that's an excellent point. I mean, if, if you want to compromise your, your, your credit rating, you, or your interest rate, rather, you, you don't have money in your, in your fund balance. So what George and Cindy have looked at takes that into account with having some level of dollars available within our fund balance in order to generate a good interest rate, regardless of which option the council chooses.
Yeah. Good point. Does anybody have any more comments? Go ahead.
I'm, thank you.
Mayor, I, I, we, I guess staff is just kind of looking for direction. Do you, do you want us to bring this back at some point in the near future? Are there options you want us, other options perhaps you want us to explore?
Let me, let me, let me try to understand. What direction are you looking, what was the purpose of this, of, of this work session? You know, what, what is it that direction the, the staff is looking for? You looking for a direction that the, the city council is saying, hey, go ahead and go forward and start considering certificate of obligation, general obligation? I mean, what, what, they help me understand, you know, what was the purpose of this work session in this right here?
Sure, sure. Certainly the purpose of the work session was to, one, we have four new council members. And we felt it was important that you fully understand not only the history of when we started reviewing and analyzing the plant, but certainly costs associated with that plan. And then the options that you as a council will have to fundings. Now, understand, or rather, when we started this, this project, Mayor, as, as staff, we started it under a different council. And that correction at the time was to move forward this way. Obviously, I recognize that we've got a new council and there's new discussion that needs to be had. And so from a staff perspective, we just simply want to know if the council needs more additional information. If you want to consider certificates of obligation, if you want to consider GOs, that's, I guess. Or do you just want us to hold back until you guys have some more time to think about it?
But, but what would be the deadline? The only deadline that I see is on the GOs. So that'd be a November election. And that had, that decision would have to be made by when? Summer?
You know, I don't have the answer to that, Mr. Thompson. I'll have to look at what, when that might
There's no answer to that, Tom, because that, that scenario has never been considered. The whole scenario here has been considered a CO.
George mentioned general obligation bonds.
Yes, he did. Yes, he did. But, but, but the whole, the whole schedule was about COs.
Not necessarily. I didn't get that, Javier. I, I, I got it. I thought it was a pretty good presentation.
No, it is, it is a great presentation, but the thing is, is that we, if we were to consider GOs, we don't have the process in detail of how that would disseminate, even if we consider to put it on the ballot this year. of how that would disseminate, uh, even if we consider to put it on the ballot this year. Uh, that basically the process would then go into, into next year, and then we would have to consider, uh, inflation, things of that nature.
But you're right, they laid out the best case scenario for us.
Yes, sir.
But, but I didn't consider it to be a pro CO or.
No, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm not talking as a pro and con, I'm just basically saying is that it's been, it's been more geared to a schedule for the COs because it is, uh, is the direction that we've been, uh, that, that, that started back in twenty seventeen.
Here's the.
Yes, sir.
There are a lot of us that believe that the citizens needed a say in this, and I get that, I'm, I'm all over that. But we also need to know what's gonna go, work against this if we do a, a general obligation as opposed to a certificate of obligation. It's gonna cost us more money, you know, and, and somehow you, it's difficult to explain to the public that it will cost them another twelve dollars a year, eighteen dollars a year. Because one, the plant went up in price, and the other is we're gonna pay a higher interest rate.
And not only that, but we have to consider that time is of an essence, I mean, we don't have to rush and do anything, but you know, I'm, I'm a citizen and I want my water to be available and I don't want the plant to be down as a citizen, not as a council person. And so, you know, as a citizen, I want my water when I want it. And I mean, it's a matter, I'm telling you, I don't know Javier if you took, take, took the tour, but we have some issues that have to be addressed and, and we can't address them three years from now, two years from now. I mean, I'm, I'm very serious.
No, no, a, a, and I, and we're all serious, and I'm serious here too, and I'm, and, and the thing is, I'm not taking any of all this lightly.
Right, I, I understand.
So, so the, you know, the, the question here is, what does the council want to do? And in what direction do you want to give them, so, you know, the thing is, is that, uh, you know, I would have rather be discussing this in, 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 in person, in live, and in person to the council, and whether this is Zoom, this is why I wanted to push it off to the, uh, to the, uh, to the retreat. Uh, so we can give that definitive, uh, 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 while we're all in the same room, that direction, whether we, you know, we wanted to continue with the, you know, GOs or the COs. Uh, but now, you know, this, this, this work session didn't come up because prior to this, I had asked for it to be pushed off to the, to the retreat. And here, here we are, so I, I, I guess my question here is, what does the council wants to do? Do they want to give?
It's a good idea that we, that we brought it up, you know, so that, I mean, if, if with our retreat, with the, um, agenda that we're looking at, I think these three hours or however many we've spent, you know, it brings us to a point where when we do discuss it, if we discuss it at a retreat, we have some background, we have some things that we don't, you know, we, we got a day and a half or two day retreat. And so this takes care of some of it, so I think this was still what needed to happen.
Okay, but I mean, the thing is, is that, so what, what is the direction the council wants to take? Do we want to go ahead and, uh, I mean, do we want to give them direction? Do we want to push it off and have, uh, and, and do that direction in the retreat, which would be, what I think we're looking in April, uh, which starts off their schedule, uh, that's considering what we saw today in this presentation? Uh, or do we want, does a majority of the council want to, uh, you know, go forward and, and have staff start considering COs? Uh, or general obligations? I mean, I, I think it pretty much, Michael, is that what your kind of direction is you're looking for?
We want, obviously you can't, uh, as a council, um, decide anything, but we want just the general, uh, I think.
Looking for consensus?
Yes, sir, consensus would work, or if the council wants to take this time. Mayor, I, I think if, if the council is of the opinion that this is something that we finalize, if you will, at the retreat, we can certainly, we can adjust the schedule somewhat, uh, and, and make sure that we reserve a little bit of time for this. That may be a, a better option for the council.
Is there any way we can get information like, uh, when the deadline would be for a general obligation to, that we can be, be put on the ballot? Or can, and can we also get information on, um, well, what happened if we do go with a certificate obligation and the petition is signed? Um, what, how much, how much is I can delay it? And I think, can we just get that info, see if we can kind of know everything about that?
Mr. and Mr. Martin, we will get that information for all of you, yes, sir.
Yes, I would agree, I would like to have that at the workshop session where we're all together.
Council, any more, any more consensus? Any more direction?
Mayor, I'm gonna have to sign off.
Okay, um.
Other obligations myself.
Understand, um, so. You know, the thing is, is that, I know, Michael, I, uh, uh, I would rather, I'd really like to get the council together and we would do it in the, in, 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 in the retreat to be able to discuss this and then definitive decide whether we, we go for, we don't, well, we'll go for, don't go forward. And, and, and I think basically is, I think everybody's in agreement that something needs to be done. And, and I think the biggest debate in here is the method of financing. Uh, and, and the pros and cons of, of, of two things, you know, uh, uh, which direction we go. And, uh, you know, so.
Mayor, we also have a work session for April sixth, which is before the, the, the retreat. Um, we could bring it back at a, at a, at another work session as well.
No, sir, I, I am not comfortable doing them in the work sessions, and I have expressed this repeatedly, I'm not a big fan of the work sessions. But, you know, but definitely if the council wants to go ahead and do that, we can.
Let's do it, great, let's all agree to do it retreat, that's fine.
Um, I would just like to do it in person because of the amount of debt that we, we, we are incurring here. Uh, I would like to be able in the room so we could be definitive of what, uh, you know, direction that we're going to, to do. And, and also the process of we're going to endet citizens or allow them to endet themselves, I think this is crucial, in my opinion. And so, but, you know, that's just me, that's just one person. And, and, but the thing is, is that the consensus, the consensus of what the council wants to do. Uh, I think at least that's the minimum that we owe the citizens to be present when we go in this direction. Uh, but yeah, definitely, because I mean, and, and, and I know it puts a strain on the schedule, I understand that. But the thing is, is that we've kicked this down of the camp so long. And, and, you know, it being pressed upon this very young, uh, uh, city council that, hey, look, dire straits, either you do it now and this is the way you're doing it. And it, you know, let me tell you, it's, 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 I, I want to be able to dot every I and every T. And, uh, and so that, that's just my biggest concern there is that, uh, you know, we do have the scenario of a, of a failing system, scenario of increasing inflation, but also the scenario that we've always found a way to uh, not be inclusive of the public that we are going to consider indebted. And I think that we owe them that as much, but, you know, that is my opinion and extremely my opinion. But I, I, I do hear every one of your concerns and, and, and they're all valid. And you've been looking at this a lot longer than, than myself, but nonetheless, uh, I just think it's, we owe it. And I think we get better feel for each other if we're all in the same rooms, just, you know, uh, it, it's just my opinion there, Steve and everybody else on the council. Uh, I would feel a little more comfortable that we were all in the same room when.
I agree.
Michael, does it, i- i- is, is, is that good right there?
Mayor, uh, we will take that and we will carve out some time within the retreat to bring this up for additional discussion.
Thank you very much, thank you, this is very good discussion council, thank you very much. George, uh, thank you for, uh, your hard work, I'm sorry that we, uh, we, we be proud of process that. Cindy, thank you very much, very good job, thank you for the information. Presentation was really good and thorough, very informative, thank you very much, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you everyone.
Tom, thank you, thank you for, uh, you know, putting up with us and a lot of good work there, uh, thank you very much, sir.
No, thank y'all very much, we appreciate it, yeah.
Okay, we're gonna go, move on to item number two, consider award bid for two twenty-one Seal Code project. Arvin, did I get that right or close?
It's good enough.
All right, thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, mayor, 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 council. Uh, this item is to consider award of bid for two thousand twenty-one, uh, Seal Code project. Uh, the bids for this project were opened on March nine, twenty twenty-one. And three responsive bids were submitted for this project. The lowest responsive bidder was CK Newberry LLC from Kennedy, Texas in the amount of six, six hundred forty-three thousand, five hundred fourteen dollars and fifty cents. The bid was, uh, twelve percent less than our estimate, and our estimate was approximately seven hundred and thirty thousand. The purpose of this project is to seal code approximately two hundred and fifty-four thousand square yards of major and minor arterial streets, which is approximately six point six linear miles. The Public Works Department is planning to work with, uh, CK Newberry LLC for the first time. We have witnessed Hector County use CK Newberry Contractor Service in two thousand twenty. And approximately seven hundred thousand square yards of Seal, Seal Code, uh, was applied as part of the county Seal Code program. And the county, uh, found the work favorable, and I'll be glad to answer your questions.
Council, does anybody have any questions? Do we have a map of what's gonna be seal coded, or do we have a general area?
Uh, yes, we do.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may note a little bit, this Tom, I'm sorry. Um, this is a smaller project for us in Seal Coat than we've done in many recent years. Uh, one of the things that our transportation master plan identified, uh, from our consultants, uh, was that we've seal coded many streets throughout the city numerous times. And, uh, so there's a point where your seal code is really just not doing a whole lot for that street anymore. Uh, it's, it's basically maybe looking, making it look good for a year or two, but it's really not helping the structure and the long-term durability of the street. And so we are, uh, trying to, uh, one, make sure that we're not, these streets are some newer ones, some of them there that you see. We're trying not to, uh, over apply Seal Coat to streets throughout the city and try to use those dollars maybe for more, um, uh, appropriate work to help try and do maybe some more mill and overlay and those types of things. Uh, many, many streets needing that type of work. And so we're, we're trying to, uh, be wise about how we make these things go. And so this project's a little smaller in seal and coat, uh, uh, Seal Coat than we've done in the past. And next year, the streets may show that we're doing more again, but, but, uh, we're just trying to be prudent about how, how we apply those.
Yes, I, I think that, yeah, I think we had talked about that one hundredth street, or Tom had brought that up, and I think you explained it. Is that rainbow, that's below that one hundred three?
Yes, it is, yes.
Okay, okay. Uh, council, does anybody have any comments or questions? All right, we're gonna move on, thank you very much, sir, thank you for the good presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to item three, consider a bid award for phase two renovations at Floyd Gwen Park, Mr. Steve Patton.
Hey, good afternoon, everybody, or maybe I should say good evening.
Pretty close.
Hey Steve.
So this is gonna be a quick presentation.
Uh, Kelly Cook is supposed to be signing in, he was gonna put a picture up on the screen of the rendering of Floyd Gwen. And, uh, I'll do a quick budget overview as well as, and cover the bid information. Uh, we did put the phase two, which is all of the remaining amenities that we want to utilize the eight million, four hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget for. We have allocated professional funds out of that, we've also allocated, uh, phase one. And phase one is the construction of our three tennis courts, our three volleyball courts, and our two tennis courts. That's under contract and they will be starting on the twenty-second. Uh, demolishing the existing, um, facilities at Floyd Gwen as far as the, those courts and getting that started. We did put this out to bid and we opened the bids, uh, uh, at three thirty as our agenda item says. On January the thirty-first, we did distribute fifteen sets of plans, uh, to different contractors. We received two bids back, they were very competitive bids and from two good companies, JC Roberts Construction, which has been recently, uh, bought out and, and changed by, into a couple of new owners. And also Onyx Construction, we went by the base bid of those two. And our base bid that we would like to award, uh, would be, of course, the lowest bid at Onyx Con, uh, Construction at four million, nine hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Uh, and, 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 four million, nine hundred and sixty-four, seven seventy-seven. And that is the base bid amount, uh, with Onyx Contractors. Their bid alternates are another nine hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars. And that will allow us to get all the additional items that we want as far as amenities. We broke the set of plans out so that the bid alternates would be those desired amenities and that we could look at those amenities and make sure that the palette that was chosen of amenities would fit within the funds of the budget available. So we're good to go on the list of our amenities, we've got a good budget number and a good base bid. So, uh, phase two is in the amount of, uh, four million, nine sixty-four, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars plus their base bid. And, uh, right now with our contingency on the final numbers, and I think there's a, a, a budget that is attached. And it, uh, shows our recommended ad alternates to be awarded. We've got the final numbers on the project, and as you can see with a contingency, two hundred thousand dollars, we could be looking at two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars under our current budget. And that's gonna be the first time in thirty years I've ever been under budget yet, so don't hold your breath. This, that's a pretty good run view, review on a fast track, believe me. Um, great project, we are gonna have the groundbreaking ceremony on the, uh, this coming Wednesday at two PM, we hope everybody can attend. Uh, mayor is gonna give a quick speech as well as the mayor. And, uh, we've got shovels for everybody to turn over the dirt real quick and get this project started. Uh, and very excited about the project, these are great, um, numbers. We've, um, got a good contractor, Onyx Contractors has done business with us before and has done a really good job and has been, uh, very good at follow-through. And most importantly, they followed up with the warranty items, and I really hold that a lot to contractors these days when we've got warranty items that need to be looked at in the future. And they've always been there to help and assist with any warranty items. So our recommendation, along with, uh, Kelly Cook, the landscape architect, is to award the bid to Onyx Contractors.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, council, do you have any questions, uh, comments, uh, for, uh, Mr. Patton?
I don't have any questions, um, I do, I would like to make a couple of comments. Um, I would like to say that to come in under bid for a project like this, I think is, is really a big deal. And also, being that this park is in District Five, I am very excited because I know that, uh, we have a lot of projects going on in our city. And oftentimes, because we're an older, established, wonderful district, um, a lot of, we don't have a lot of room for extras. Um, and in this case, I'm excited to be able to, um, present to the, to the city of Odessa, but to the ci- citizens of District Five, something that's gonna be really, really, really nice. I hope it will draw people from all areas of town, the park is one of the busiest in our city. And, um, it's, it's, I think I was reading, and Steve mentioned in the paper that we've not had any major renovations on it in over forty years. And so I'm, I'm really excited, I just hope, you know, that everything goes well and that the citizens will be patient with us because it's, it's not gonna, you know, if it, if it goes over, it's not gonna take one day and we're, we're at a new park, it's gonna take some time, so we're gonna need citizens to, uh, be patient with us and just look and see what's about to happen. I'm really excited about it, I, I'm thankful to Steve, Kelly, and everyone who's had a part in it that we're able to add some things that we were hoping for, so.
It is one of the old, is one of the oldest, has gotten the least, uh, attention. I remember back in my days back in the nineties, yeah, it was very tough to try to get anything done, when you're with it without, uh, in-kind donations from our volunteers.
Right, Javier, right.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions? Uh, anything about, uh, you know, alternates or anything in, within this, uh, this, this, this list here?
I, I have, uh, I have one question, just one thing that caught my eye on this was the, um, the cost of the concession. The $400,000. Is there a plan or drawing for that concession stand? That's seems to be a really nice one, like.
Well, it's two story. It's just it's exactly like what we've got out at UTPB. That two story with the press box on the second story up there. And right now, the design is concession stand on one side, and then the restroom on the other side on the first floor, staircase in the center to go up to a press box.
Oh, okay. Okay.
It's two story and it'll be and yeah, that thanks, Kelly. Appreciate that. That looks that looks great. Gives everybody kind of idea of what everything looks like. But yeah, for a one story building, that would be extremely expensive.
That makes more sense than it's a two story.
It's it's two story and it'll be, of course, oriented to where the the set of windows will be behind back the back stock and and home plate. And it's a good size. I think that they will be thrilled with the with the building. It'll be concrete block and it'll have a red standing seam roof, a pitch on it. It's exactly like what we have out at UTPB.
Yeah, I've been asked, there'd be a duplication whichever UTPB. Steve, let me ask you a quick question on the the lighting of the trail. And so how much footage of that trail is going to be lit? When we're looking at this rendering, what are we what are we looking for is that's going to be lit up of the walking trail around the facility, the center to the east or the entire thing?
The entire thing.
Wow, how how many linear feet is that? I mean, is that a mile?
Mr. Mayor, the the main trail, which is eight feet, which if you can see my screen right now, my cursor on, that's an eight foot trail. Yeah, that is within 60 feet of being exactly a mile.
Okay.
And then this is a secondary trail. It's a little bit smaller for those who would really want to extend up. But as it is right now, this trail and this trail will both be illuminated.
Let me ask you a real quick question. The 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 amenity is going to be used, is going to be a stand up, is going to be a low ground? I mean, what contingent are we taking? I mean, usually, we'll, you know, we we have stuff like that. We have vandalism. So
You talking about the the light fixture itself?
Yes, sir. The light fixture itself.
Yes, sir. Those are on a a concrete pedestal. We do that so mowers, stray golf carts, football players don't run into it and break the light pole. So that'll that'll be on a a small concrete pedestal standing about two feet above the ground. And then the pole is a I believe these are 20 foot poles through here. We're trying to maintain a a certain foot candle illumination so we don't have dark areas along the trail throughout it. And and we're using a fixture that we hope to be able to standardize throughout the park system so that we're able to find, you're able to find spare parts and and we're not reinventing the wheel with every park.
Okay, okay. Good deal. Good deal.
Javier, there's a mayor, there's a really cool feature about the the light post. If you'll notice at Memorial Gardens, we built that back in 1991. Because of the the photometrics of the site, the poles are located on a section of the walking trail. They'll be on one side. Then to make sure that they maximize the photometrics and get the light spillage where it needs to be, there's some poles that come on the other side. Well, it's great as far as functions of the light, but when we go to put those banners up, you end up with banners on one side of the road of the the walkway and on the other side. So I made sure when we decided to do all of these light poles, if we were to ever have any type of special event or anything where we wanted to put banners on every single pole in that park, every walking around the walking trail, every single pole is on one side of that on the sidewalk so that all the banners will line up on one side of the walkway, and they're going to be legible and not be on not stagger all over the place like we do at Memorial Gardens.
You know, I've never noticed I've never noticed that until you just said that. Only you would only you would know that.
That's a Steve thing.
That's a thing. Yeah, yeah, I understand. You know, attention to detail. This is great. This looks good. And I and I concur with everything with Mara said. This is long overdue for the District Five in the city of Odessa. It's this long old county facility that we've had in our possession. Very exciting, very exciting. Good job, guys.
Huge.
Any more questions and comments?
No, good job, guys.
Thank you.
Steve, I'm keeping this on this on this budget. Very good job.
I can't believe it. And we're not finished yet. Wait, wait till we get finished with it.
Mata Mata had had wanted to know, he goes, man, that's that's a pretty expensive concession stand for hot dogs and nachos.
Yeah, no doubt, no doubt.
We mentioned with Steve about this early on. The the budget was was really important to everybody. And so we took a little different route than has been done in the past on on major projects like this. And we designed a base bid, nice project that we knew was going to be substantially under budget so that the city had a project that they could turn dirt on and move and be proud of. Then everything else was gravy on top of that. And we had all these ad alternates that hopefully we could afford and and work into the project. And that was the safest way, making sure that the city was on budget or under budget. And everybody was getting the elements that they wanted.
I hope it can stay that way. Kelly, thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you.
Is there any more questions, any more comments? All right, guys. All right, sounds good. Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Can I have a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting?
So I'll make a motion.
I got Ms. Swan, Swann, the motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I get it from a favor of adjourned.
Hi.
All opposed? Indicate by saying nay. We are adjourned. Work session. Everybody have a good evening.